Okay, we're recording? Very good?
Excellent. So, welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, July 15, 2020. It is 7:02 PM and this is a virtual meeting. It's being televised live on Channel 79 and it is available via Zoom link to the public. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Girl Scouts. And I believe their names are Naomi and Noel Salami. So, please, all rise and Noel and Naomi Salami will lead us in the pledge.
Is that Nora?
Yes. So, this is Noel Salami and Nora Salami. Noval is in first grade and Nora is going into fourth grade. You guys ready to say the pledge? All right, go for it.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your Girl Scout group? We would love to hear whatever you'd like to tell us.
Well, currently, New Canaan has 29 troops and have over 250 registered girls. And registration is still open for the fall for any young ladies who would like to join our troops. And our new website is newcannangirlscouts.org.
Is it fun?
Yes, yes.
Are you learning anything? It's just fun.
Yeah, kind of. We're not really learning that much.
But it's enough to have fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, ladies, and I hope you'll join us again soon. Thank you for the pledge. I guess Rich Townsend, would you like to take the role?
Sure, Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan. John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Mark Jmski.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow. Maria Naughton. Maria Naughton. You're here, Maria.
She was there.
I'm muted.
Ah, there we go. Maria Naughton. Christina Ross.
Here.
Rich Townsend, here. Penny Young.
Here.
You have 11 of 12. You have a quorum, so let's go.
Okay, excellent. The meeting is called to order. First item of business is the minutes. Do I have approval of the minutes for the March 10, 2020 budget workshop meeting and the June 17, 2020 regular meeting, including public hearings? Do I have a motion?
Aye.
Okay, Sven, I take a second from Steve. Any discussion on the minutes? Any comments on how excellent they are? No, nothing? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. So, I see John Engel, Robin, Tom, Liz, Rich, Penny, Mark, Maria, Christina, Sven, Steve, and Mike, all on my first screen. I think that means that the minutes are approved. Okay, next, we have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address in the chat window. I know you can't see each other, but I can see all the chats because I'm the host. Comments will be limited to two minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Right now, I think I only have three so far. Susan Servin, Charles Robinson, and James Bash. But I imagine more will join. Up, and there's Kim Norton. Okay, so with that, let's begin with Susan Servin.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, John. Hi, everyone. I'm going to talk fast, as usual. My name is Susan Servin, and my family and I have lived here 22 years. My husband grew up here. He grew up, actually, right up the road from where we live now. And our kids went to all the same New Canaan schools that he did, which can be awkward, but that's what happened. We lived in Stanford briefly after an overseas stint, but we always knew we'd buy our home in New Canaan. We left Stanford for many reasons, the schools, taxes, but especially the lack of charm in the city. We love the schools and especially the downtown village feeling of New Canaan. It's a unique feature that other towns do not have. I'd like to speak briefly about the library plan. I'm sure many supporters of both the library and the 1913 original building will be speaking tonight, but one item I'd like to focus on has been referred to as the town green. According to the public forum doctrine, which is an analytical tool used in First Amendment jurisprudence, a town green cannot be determined to be a town green unless it's a quintessential public forum. That is, unless it's owned by a municipality, allows for protests, et cetera, which a sidewalks, public parks, and formal town greens would be. And you can Google quintessential town green to see what comes up. So, the green space at the 1913 building is not and can't be a town green. Since it's not a town green, it would essentially be a lawn that the library owns and can decide what to do with. So, continuously referring to the lawn as a town green is not accurate and may be confusing to people and possibly misleading. And if the land on which the 1913 library currently stands is allowed to simply become a lawn, if they tear down the building with no protection, easements, anything, then there is nothing precluding it from being sold to a developer who could then put up a multi-use retail building or other building on the site. And we're very concerned about that. Help us keep some of the history and charm of our village. Please give the friends of our 1913 library time to work with our newly hired consulting company, Kirk and Company, to help determine alternate ways to reuse and repurpose this beautiful building so it can stand for another 100 years. And we have very quickly a one-minute video. It's one minute. Can I share my screen?
No, I think that's sort of showing videos is sort of against the rules. We get two minutes of comment per person. But thank you. Thank you for those comments. And I will say that there has been a lot of discussion in the drafts drafting of the MOU to protect the town green. So, if there is a town green, I can assure you it will never be sold or redeveloped. That's sort of been a stipulation from the beginning in every draft I've seen. So, while we don't have a final draft, I think the first selectman is probably hearing every word you said and considering, you know, that request and others as he develops the MOU. Next, we have on our list, I have APS. I'm not sure who that is, so I'm going to move to Charles Robinson. Charlie, you ready?
John, thank you so much for enabling me to speak tonight. You know, there's precious little that I'm original about, but I would really like to kind of pronounce tonight some heart, some of my own heartening in some new ideas that are coming forth. I would have to single out Kevin Moynihan as either being an author or a proponent of this. And I would also want to single out Steve Carl, who seems to be coming forward to try to bring all of us together on this. There are some very, very large ideas that are so much greater than just simply the preservation of the 1913 versus the New Canaan Library Plan. When I say larger, I mean larger for the whole town in exponential ways. I hope you'll see these come forth in short order, but let me tell you, they're compelling and they bring me to hold back all critical comments at this time and to encourage all coming-together comments to this greater notion. I'll let others bring it forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, and next on my list is James Bosch.
Yep. Hey, John, everyone. So, I have a few points. I think the major point is I'd like to see a lot more detail on what is going to be done to protect taxpayers from spending more than $10 million on this project. I think it's a project that's already increased in its estimate from $25 to $35 million right now. There hasn't been any public information as to why that increase has unfolded. We heard last night from the BOF that the construction lender, meaning the bank, would be on the hook for any potential cost overruns in the project. But it's also true that there is an implied moral obligation that taxpayers, residents, backstop the bank for any cost overruns. Second point is, I haven't seen, and I'm probably one of the few people that listens to most of these Town Council meetings, I haven't heard a lot of debate on what is the best return on investment with taxpayers' money in terms of potential projects that we could pursue. So, when I think and reflect more on what the best potential investments would be on that metric, I think about things like better, faster transportation of trains into the city. Maybe siding can help that. Affordable daycare, senior housing, or even the idea, novel though it might be interstate, of letting taxpayers keep more of their money. So, investing in a library is a nice-to-have. And I know a lot of work has been done going into this project to deliver something that's very aspirational. But we also have to understand the context that this is an industry that's in secular decline because of the different ways that people consume information. So, I would love to see a substantive debate with numbers regarding ROI. And then the final point is, I've heard a lot about this is a great bargain. We can potentially put in $10 million, hopefully, for a very expensive project. That ignores the bigger picture of why do we need every, why do we need every project to be so expensive? I've heard the default message of we're a wealthy town and we like really nice things, but that shouldn't be the answer for everything. And I think that's how we wound up with 56 town-owned buildings and bloated spending and debt versus every other town in Connecticut. So, I would hope that council members would reflect more on some of those issues before signing up for anything.
Thank you, James. Next up, we have Kim Norton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Norton. Tonight, about the progress, friends of our 1913 library have made to address some of the concerns expressed by our elected officials and residents about saving 1913. What will the use of the building be? Who will occupy it? Does it even have a use? I can reassure you that based in our preliminary conversations with experts, not only is 1913 desirable, it's a huge asset that appeals to many different types of potential tenants and lends itself to many different types of uses. It's insane. We have retained a professional preservation real estate account called Kirk and Company out of Boston and New York to conduct a feasibility study. They specialize in adaptive reuse and have successfully launched new beginnings for older buildings with friends groups just like ours. Not only do they make comparable rents in our hyperlocal area, but they will also advise us on ownership structures and the economic sustainability of our long-term plan to transform 1913 into a vibrant standalone structure. Contrary to two reports put out by some, the 1913 building is in excellent condition. Dry basement, strong foundation, and a good condition slate roof. Architectural Preservation Studio, a firm whose wheelhouse is architecture, historic preservation, and building envelope consulting, after reviewing our building conditions report, which was based on two walkthroughs of the building, has estimated that it will cost $828,000 to repair and renovate 1913, including ADA compliance. This total amount also includes a 10% contingency cushion for unanticipated expenses. We plan to roll out a modest proposal that will allow our town to keep 1913 in place with creative financing options that will be based on its long-term viability and use over many years to come. In keeping with our commitment to do this, the New Canaan Preservation Alliance Board has unanimously voted to support a non-binding agreement to become interim leases or owners of the building as it transitions to a new beginning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, we have Rose Rothbart. And that's the end of the list unless there's somebody else who's joined the meeting late and wants to address the council.
Hi, my name is Rose Rothbart. I live at 439 Old Stamford Road. And I was asked to speak and share a video, but I hear you say that that's not allowed right now. However, I hope.
Is it new? Have we ever seen it before?
Um, it's been on the Preservation Alliance website for a month or so. So, I invite everyone to go to that website, and it's on the main page. And click on it. And basically, what it shows is, it shows the 1913 library in situ with the new library design in the background. So, what it's illustrating is how an old building can be in relation to a new design, which is done very successfully throughout the world. So, that's not, you know, that works. So, that's not an argument against keeping 1913. And it also shows how the building is not very close to the new build, the new library. So, it's a separate entity. And it also shows how there's still a lot of green space left. So, I invite everyone to go and look at the New Canaan Preservation Alliance.org website and see that. But to follow up on that, I just want to express that I don't know if people keep up with this, but there are some incredibly heartfelt statements by people who either currently live in New Canaan or who grew up in New Canaan about how important this building is to them. And I just feel like that was a miscalculation on the part of the library to not recognize the importance of this building. And, you know, there are a lot of people who say, "Oh, I'm so upset, you know, that this building is going away." Well, we have the ability to keep this building. And it can be done. And it can be done while the new library progresses. So, we just have to work this out together and have basically a win-win and have representation of New Canaan's past as well as New Canaan's future together in one site. And that's what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. If there's no further comments for the council, we'll move on to the first selectman's update, and then we will return to the discussion of the library project. First, are you ready? Nope. I think the first selectman has left the room.
John, I think somebody else wants to speak. Susan Polish.
Susan Polish, go ahead. I'll put you down in the chat room. Are you there, Susan?
I think she needs to be unmuted.
She's on mute.
Tell her to unmute herself.
I'm here now. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to say that we've heard from
Yes.
the board and from the building committee and from a few of the elected officials. Just one second. I'm sorry.
You gotta love Zoom.
I'm sorry. That there's been at least eight years in your combined efforts about dedicated to the plans for the new library. And we all thank you for this. We understand that town needs to expand the resources of the library. And much has been said about the new program, and we agree. But my question is, where, after eight years, are the cost estimating documents? The New Canaan residents have only been shown animated renderings that don't have anything to do with construction costs. And for Centerbrook to have produced these renderings, the renderers needed to have drawings to rely on their renderings. When taxpayers are asked to pay a substantial proportion of construction costs and operating costs, I believe it's their right to review these documents. Normally, when a project of this scope, including taxpayer dollars, a room is dedicated to showing side plans, floor plans, elevations, showing hard and soft costs, it's hard and soft core costs, and projections for operating costs. And these should be available for the public review. Mechanical engineering costs could be included. For a building of 48,000 square feet with elevations of floor-to-ceiling glazing, there are strict energy codes. Which mechanical engineering firm has been commissioned? And what are the construction costs for the installation of these mechanical systems? And what are the projected maintenance costs for these systems and the energy costs? I think before we commit $10 million of taxpayers' money, we need to know a budget based on construction documents and projections for operating expenses. I think it's to take a second step before the first without having the information that New Canaan taxpayers are entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I know you are, a lot of people share those questions. Okay, so if there's no further comments from the public, can we move to the first selectman's update? Are you ready, Kevin? Okay, unmute yourself again. All right, there you go. Nope.
I'm here.
I hear you now.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I only have a few items that I reported last night to the Board of Finance. First, I'll give you a brief COVID update. Our Health Department continues to do a spectacular job of trying to keep track of the very few cases we have in town. I'd remind people that we did 3,200 tests from late May into July 1, which was a huge amount of testing in town, and only had a handful, literally five, two of which we thought were false positives. And we went through the month of June pretty much without any cases. But as we opened up on June 20, and people have begun to travel, we began to see a few travel-related cases. People coming back from states like South Carolina, an individual from Stanford staying with a family in New Canaan who infected a family of four. And that same teenager infected another teenager in New Canaan. So, given the amount of activity we're starting to see with people out and about and traveling, we're not surprised to see a few cases developing, but there's no pattern other than travel. And we don't really see any community transmission, one case leading to another. We were concerned about a number of parties, so we stood up a testing site on Monday with a docs, which is a kind of a chain of urgent care centers. They tested 173 residents and another 50 non-residents who managed to get into our New Canaan testing. But we had only two positive cases of two young people under the age of 23. So, as I said, most of what we're seeing is travel-related, and we're not seeing anything that would be regarded as a spike. But that's what the Health Department is there to do, to trace every case and to try to understand what is happening in town. So, we reopened Town Hall last Monday, the 6th of July. We're discouraging people from coming to Town Hall unless it's really necessary. We're especially discouraging people to come to Town Hall to pay taxes during the month of July. You can pay taxes by mail by dropping your taxes in a lockbox at Town Hall. You can pay online, or you can bring cash to Bankwell. We are not undertaking public meetings for the rest of the summer, as most, you know, a number of other towns are not even opening their town halls. They're keeping them open only by appointment. But we are not planning to have public meetings until the end of the governor's emergency order on September 9. But so, we're being very conservative, very cautious with COVID. The state of Connecticut overall has very good numbers, both hospitalization and deaths. And we, but we want to make sure we don't see any recurrence of what happened in March with Westport and New Rochelle. But it could happen, obviously, when you have the virus president in town and in the towns around us. We are working to implement the combined heat and power project at the sewer plant. And we are trying to get the Saks Middle School combined heat and power project going, but we have a little disagreement with the Board of Education as to how we're going to approach that project. The Board of Finance put the project in the town's budget, not the Board of Education's budget. So, we're working that through. We went out with an RFP in early June and for solar for four school buildings and for three or four town buildings. Came back with very favorable results with six or so qualified bidders and another two that were late. But with bids that are as low as 3.9 cents a kilowatt hour, which is pretty attractive pricing to save a lot of money over 20, 15, 20 years. And so, the schools are planning to proceed with their West and Saks projects and following on with the high school. East school, it will be have solar as soon as the roof is finished in August. And those will all be PPAs, power purchase agreements, where a financial partner agrees to take payments from Eversource to purchase the electricity. And we essentially pay about four cents a share, four cents a kilowatt hour compared to about 16 cents per kilowatt hour that we currently pay generally for the schools and the town buildings. The town buildings, we're going to have to look at is to see whether we want to do power purchase agreements, which mean you simply sign an agreement and get lower electricity costs. Or, as we did with the other four projects we did last year, we could invest our own capital and get a payback. And so, that's been worked on. We had a relatively good Connecticut Siding Council hearing last Thursday evening by Zoom. It was their first Zoom meeting. And that, there'll be another hearing on that tower, I think, the 28th of July. And we're working on another tower location, which we should have news about soon. We are talking about a couple, three asset sales that the Board of Finance has encouraged us to look at. And finally, we ended the fiscal year in very good shape, as Lynda will explain in his financial update, with above-budget revenues and substantial savings because the school buildings were closed. And so, I'll leave that to Lynda, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, what asset sales?
Christina, go ahead. Say again.
What asset sales are being contemplated?
I can't talk about them. They're in negotiation. Well, one, you know, the fine cottage.
Sven, go ahead.
Kevin, either you or Tiger, status of gas at West?
Sorry about West?
Status of the gas at West?
Well, we've been doing, you know, the combined heat and power projects are designed to incent Eversource to install the pipeline up Ponus Ridge to West School. The state has just told us they won't give another extension on the oil tank, which is disconcerting because we were trying to rush to get gas installed before the oil tank has to be replaced. But I don't know whether we're going to make the deadline now, so.
Related to that, I have a question. I read somewhere this week about the gas line installation being perhaps ahead of schedule on some roads, and perhaps those roads being repaved and earlier than normal. I think it was a little bit confusing to me. So, maybe, Tiger, could you clarify? Are they, in fact, ahead of schedule and ready to pave some roads early?
I wouldn't say that they're ahead of schedule. What the proposal is, is that we're looking at, well, Phil Creston Village specifically, there's a contingent of neighbors that have gone through the entire neighborhood, you know, basically, essentially did what we asked, which was go through the entire neighborhood, canvass the entire neighborhood, find out exactly who is left that might want to hook up, and then put them in touch with, we put them in touch with the sales force at Eversource so that we can then have anyone who wants to hook up, say, get hooked up, and then anyone else is basically yay or nay. And then anyone else is basically yay or nay. Yes, you're in, no, I'm not. I don't plan on it in the near future for my family or my residents. So therefore, we would know that everyone's been serviced and then we can go forward. We don't have to wait till next year to pave the road. So in essence, yes, the paving schedule is advanced, but I wouldn't call that they're ahead of schedule on installations. They're actually behind because of the COVID for this year. They haven't started the work in town, in the downtown area yet because of, because of the coronavirus.
Now, is that because the governor called it a non-essential activity and non-essential project? Or, and is there any way we can get relief on that and move forward and catch up? I think it's a burden for a lot of people to have our roads torn up, you know, for an extra year or an extra two years. So if that's the reason, can we get it reversed?
I don't know if it was due to the governor's decision or an internal decision from Eversource that they needed to divert their funding elsewhere. You are correct, we are in that situation whereby we allowed them underneath the MOU three years from the start of main installation to hook up everyone possible. And that third year is this year for the roads that started in twenty eighteen, so paving would start in twenty twenty-one. And I've asked Eversource several times to try to speed up the negotiations or the discussions with the people on those roads so that we don't leave anyone behind. So that's our concern is that do we go forward and pave and leave someone behind? Since there'll be a two-year moratorium at the end? Or do we give them some additional time because of the coronavirus to then make sure that every resident who wants to be serviced can be serviced? It's a difficult decision.
Probably made easier if we had ample communication from them on, you know, what the timelines and their expectations were of resident decisions. I mean, if I knew I had six months to make the decision and then, you know, it was going to be over. But I think there's a lot of confusion around the current timeline and whether it's changed. Any other questions for Tiger or Kevin? All right, well, then I guess I'll make a segue into the library discussion. Some of the council members, because I think that's what most of the fifty-five people attending the meeting want to hear about. Some council members said, don't put the, don't put the library on the agenda. We don't have the MOU. The library is squarely in the hands of the Board of Finance. We should respect the process. We shouldn't talk about the MOU. We shouldn't be talking about the library before our time. And I get that. I chose to put it on the agenda because we set an expectation in the public's mind and in the library's mind that we were going to be discussing and voting on it in, discussing and/or voting on it in July because the library had an expectation that they were going to move forward with P and Z in October or at least this fall. And in my conversation with John Goodwin last week, it was still John Goodwin's expectation that P and Z would begin to take on the questions of the library in his October meeting. However, John Goodwin said, I expect a signal from the town funding bodies before it comes to P and Z. I expect you guys to have voted on something and to show your support or lack of support before we take it up. And so I really didn't want to discuss the MOU. I really wanted to put it on the agenda so we could discuss with each other, what is our expectations of a timetable? And, you know, and reset those expectations. If, if on the one hand, we have a lot more questions, you know, a lot of people on this call say we have a lot more questions, and I imagine I'll hear what some of those questions are from town council members over the next fifteen minutes, then, then John Goodwin is wrong. He will not be taking this up in October and these dates could slip till spring. And if that's the case, I think the library will say, wait a minute, that, you know, that, that's, that's not going to work for us. So I really need to understand whether the library still has an expectation that we're going to be able to vote on this in the fall so they can move forward with their original timetable. So with that, Kevin, do you want to address your expectations of what the process looks like from now forward? And what kind of questions do you think we're going to be able to get answered before we are required to vote?
Yeah, John, I would say it a little differently. We, we had a plan to try to have a discussion with the library and a proposed memorandum of understanding by June. And as we got into it and you, I worked with you and I worked with Todd and a member, a couple of members of the Board of Finance, we realized that we didn't have enough information. The Board of Finance last night addressed the issues, if the information issues they still want to see. And you made very clear, you didn't want to, actually with the meeting you had in late May, that you did not want to proceed with the MOU until you saw what was being brought to planning and zoning. So to some extent, the process has been delayed. We were trying to catch a window where the process could be approved by August, but we've obviously missed that window. The windows, we, you know, right now, we're under a Governor's Emergency Order, which does not effectively allow referendums. And we were waiting, we were trying to see if we could figure out a way to do a, have an opportunity for a referendum by fall. But since we're delayed, we're not going to make that window, which means we're beyond the November third election because we can't schedule it for the November third election. So we're somewhat delayed. But on the other hand, both the Board of Finance and you have information questions still and the library, and there's a couple of issues that have to be resolved. We, you know, you and I talked to John Goodwin. Traffic and parking is an issue that we are trying to address now rather than waiting until October because that really determines a lot of the cost issues. So it's, you know, we really were on the track of gathering more information and then bringing a plan that has more, less questions by the time it's coming to the Board of Finance for approval of a bond resolution and then referral to you, to the council.
Do you want to talk, do you want to tell the council what that means, a traffic review? Traffic questions, or do we want to just discuss that in a future month?
Well, the, we learned a month ago or so that the library's planned underground parking presents a traffic issue downtown, which we, the Board of, I'm sorry, the planning zoning may not approve. And that could affect whether underground parking could be accomplished. So we decided after our meeting with John Goodwin that we'll hire another engineer who does traffic studies for the town to do a peer review, see if we really have an issue.
So just, just to make it very clear, the library's original intention was underground parking. And some people have said, oh, I think the library doesn't want to do underground parking. It's not that simple. Library, in our conversations with the library, said that that is a very busy intersection. And it, tell me if I'm wrong, Tiger, but that is considered a state-controlled intersection. And the state would have something to say about adding traffic within a hundred yards to that intersection. Is that right? Is that, is the state a complication with regard to traffic?
It's always a concern. I wouldn't call it a complication, but it's a concern. If the library is considered a traffic generator, so yes, they would have to necessarily adhere to some of their guidelines.
So in my conversations with leadership at the library, I said, is this, is your preference driving this? And they said, no, you know, we're not driving, you know, which solution, which parking solution is adopted. You know, we just want, you know, what's safe and practical. So therefore, Kevin has asked for a second opinion on the existing traffic study. And I think that's a good idea. So we're collecting more information. Kevin is collecting more information so that, I guess, P and Z can better evaluate and the Board of Finance frankly can better evaluate the proposals. Any other questions on anything Kevin just said or any of the points I just made?
I do, John, it's Christina. My, my statement is basically, right now, the library parking empties out onto South and onto Cherry Street. There's no, there's no difference. The underground parking can still exit at either one of those two locations. It doesn't have to exit onto Main Street. So it can exit onto Maple Street. There are other ways to reconfigure the exits of the parking lot. And I just want to make sure that those are considered as well.
Yeah, but the preference with, with the design of the building is to have it empty out onto Main Street, but that's what's being studied to see if that plan works.
And maybe they have to change it to South or to Cherry.
It probably doesn't work with the design of the building, but.
I would also request that the plans in the downtown study that the library presented, along with all the other documents that they have brought up, including the budget, be available for town council and the public to view. I think that for us to vote on something that's unseen is unacceptable.
Well, Christina, there's no plan yet that's being put forth. So if the plan is in motion, there's nothing for you to review yet.
There are preliminary plans because I know that they're, they exist. So those plans and whatever other documents the library refers to need to be made public.
If this was a public building, I would agree with you. They're, they're private, five oh one C three.
The FOIA Commission considers the library an arm of the town due to the high level of income that they get to receive from the town. So given that we give them more than half of their operating average, two point three million plus, I think we are entitled to have a seat at the table and to have those documents. And they cannot say that we're a five oh one C three because they're not self-sustaining.
Anyone else?
I, I would agree with Christina. I mean, I don't think you can say they're private when the town is lending them or giving, granting ten million dollars. So I think, you know, everyone deserves to understand the partnership that we're undertaking, even though we won't control things going forward. The only control we have is before we grant the money. So I think due diligence requires that we understand, you know, the spreadsheets, the construction costs upfront. Especially now, more than ever, I would have to say, at this time, I mean, you know, a year ago, I might not have said that, but at this point, we really have to understand in this economy.
Well, that's, that's what you made clear about waiting for the P and Z process and also the Board of Finance made that clear last night. So this, this is a process, it's going to be multi-month.
Right.
Well, then maybe, maybe the library needs to wait until P and Z approves or disapproves before they get a vote from us. Because you're asking basically for us to vote blindly on a, on a project without knowing what the forecast is in its operations, what realistically it's going to cost and what it's going to look like.
There's nothing to vote on, Christina, until.
The ten million dollars is what you're asking us to vote on.
There's no vote.
Not tonight, but there will be a vote eventually.
Eventually.
The question is, when does the vote take place? After P and Z, but we know then exactly what it looks like and what we're getting into.
I think that's what you and John made clear, that you want to see the P and Z process before you sign off, so.
Okay, thank you.
But then I heard from John Goodwin and he said, we really want to understand that you have some level of commitment toward this before we go through the exercise and, you know, of design and of the building. I understand, you know, that he wants to understand that we, he wants to know, are we committed at the ten million dollar level if it's a satisfactory building and a satisfactory design? I think he wants us to answer certain financial questions, the funding bodies, before he takes it up. And I think that's fair. So while Christine, I don't know that we need to know whether the traffic empties onto Main Street, Cherry Street or South Avenue to know whether we're in for ten million dollars. We may want more transparency into the operating budget. You may want more transparency into the building costs. You may want more transparency into the financial questions in order for the board, for the town council and Board of Finance to be able to vote. Then we get a chance to ratify it once P and Z has gone through the process so that it comes in some form that is not completely alien to us. I think that's, it becomes a two-step process. I think we have to give them a preliminary indication of support, let them go through their process and then ratify the decision and then it goes to bonding. That, that would be my proposal, it's just my proposal. But I, I think it's unfair to tell John Goodwin, no, I really think you have to go through the entire exercise before we discuss it and vote. I think that's, you know, that it's a bit of a cop-out. I think also the library has asked us specifically to indicate whether we are support of this in twenty so that they can go through the P and Z process and go after fundraising. So to tell them that we're not taking this up until the spring and giving any indication on how we feel until the spring, I think would be very tough on the library board.
Yep, but John, don't you think it's very tough on a town council member when we are responsible for voting on something and the library wants to hold back on all the information that they're claiming they have?
Absolutely, and I think you are, you are a hundred percent right to ask for transparency in certain areas. But I just want to caution you that we are not going to get all the answers before it goes to P and Z. We are not going to know certain things about traffic and certain things about size until it comes back from P and Z.
I'm not sure, John, I'm not sure I agree with that. I'm not sure, the Board of Finance should everything, they should have everything they want by September.
Okay, good.
And you, I think watching the Board of Finance meeting, you'll probably have most of what you want by September.
I, I don't disagree with that, but.
John, I just wanted to underscore about the Board of Finance meeting last night. They were impressively thorough on the specific issue of, of knowing in great specificity what the cost would be so that they would develop a comfort level that it wouldn't exceed the budgeted amount. It just blew me away how thoughtful their appraisal was. So if anybody's concerned about this, I really suggest you, you know, I don't know if that meeting is available online, but certainly the minutes. But I don't know exactly how process-wise that, that learning, those learnings would work their way into the process. I would imagine if there were a condition in the, in the MOU that said that the money will only be released on satisfaction of a certain, you know, whatever we call transparency or analysis, that then we could be asked to adopt the MOU before it goes to planning and zoning. But I would, I would want to hear how planning, how Board of Finance would structure that process before I get worried about it because they, they seem to have excellent command of all the issues. Anything you could, you could worry about, they seem to have taken into account. I, I think Kevin would agree with that.
It's Penny. Is the, is the Board of Finance last night's meeting online yet, Tom?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, because I think not, not all of us, you know, were at, you know, watching that last night.
It's on the town website under the YouTube link.
Okay, fabulous. You know, I think this whole process is very difficult for the town council because there are a lot of discussions going on, so the discussions about what's going to be in the MOU. And we don't have input to it other than, you know, John. And so the other eleven of us are wondering, you know, how the discussions are going and the details and so forth. So it's, it's tricky for us sitting back and waiting for the process, you know, to unfold. When, when we're, you know, our emails are loaded with pro and con comments from members of the public and, you know, we don't know. So we don't, we don't know how to answer some of their questions because we're not privy to, you know, some of those discussions. So I guess we'll all have to preview the Board of Finance and get, get educated on what they discussed last night. And hopefully, that's, that's going to answer our questions as well.
Penny, that's not entirely correct. Rich and John were working with us to give us their ideas as to what. Penny, that's not entirely correct. Rich and John were working with us to give us their ideas as to what. Needs to go into the MOU, but the the real issue is the process. There are issues outstanding that have to be resolved before we get to even talking about a proposed MOU.
Okay, I knew John was, I didn't know how actively involved Rich was, so.
So the the issues are slowing things down besides COVID.
Right.
Can I just make a comment? I mean, the the key question is that everyone keeps asking is what is the design and what is the cost? And it wasn't until just recently that the library has kicked off and told the architects to get to work on putting the plans together, that the actual plans everyone's used to want to see. And certainly the plans that need to be done by the time they go to P and Z. And and it last night, what came up in planning and zoning is exactly as Tom said, I mean, I mean, in in the finance committee. Is we certainly, we certainly can give a, what I took away from the meeting was they said, we certainly can support the project. But we cannot release any money to this until we understand the the same granularity a bank would understand for putting, putting money into a project like this. Which is the cash flow, it is the budget, it is, it is understanding who the backstop is. And and how that relates to the town. So I I back up what what Tom said is is the the Board of Finance laid out a very large number of of items last night they want to see. And I think most of us would be very glad if they actually see those. But I can tell you, they won't see them until the architects are done. And I believe Kevin said last night, the architects were were scheduled to be gone to to get to planning and zoning, to start with planning and zoning in October. The architects have to be done at the beginning of September. And so the data that everyone is is dying to see will really not be around until September, if I understood well. And I I would just make one suggestion, and that is. We have, we have asked for in the last town council meeting that we have representation on on the building committee and on and on the Board of Trustees. I don't know why the the library wouldn't invite us onto the Board of Trustees on a, on a, on an inter, on a, on a temporary basis. Until that was actually sorted out and on to the, on to the building committee. So we would actually understand this stuff. Because that's where it's taking place. And I don't understand why we're waiting. I don't understand why they wouldn't say, this is a community project, you guys ought to come on board right now. And and we'll, we'll sort out everything else.
Rich, that's, that's what I suggested last night. So I think there's no reason why we can't go down the road together, even though we don't have a final understanding. But also two things to mention, the plan is to have the shovel on the ground by next May. And the bank has committed to a $15 million, the bank contacted us and told us they're committed to the $15, $15 million line of credit. The uh, the library has $8 million in the bank, their $16 million of pledges, so they don't really need the town's money. To get to where they need to be and to meet the target. But they do need pretty clear indication that both the Board of Finance and the town council are working toward approval. It may not be unanimous, but at least they have to get to.
Kevin, we're going down a path similar to the Fields. We don't know what we don't know until we know it. So if the library says they only have a million, but 60 million pledged, they're still $10 million away from where the goal is. So how do we know that they're going to have enough money once the project started to finish it?
Christine, that was discussed last night at the Board of Finance.
I listened to it.
Reality is people pledge money over three or five years. So you're having $8 million in the door already. And have, and the pledges are are legal obligations. So and the best, that's what the bank is lending against as well.
Correct, but my understanding is that they have 16 million in pledges plus the 10 million from the town that brings it up to 26 million.
And they have a phase which has not begun and they and they, the marker for the public phase is $5 million, which they're gonna do far, far more than that. So. Reality is, uh, they're on target to their, I believe they're on target right now to a shovel on the ground next May. And that's still doable given where we are. But we have a lot of discussions and information to get through and a couple of issues to be resolved, including the the 2013 building, I mean, 1913 building.
Yes.
Uh, so, but again, at the end of the day, the 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 library's plan still involves a building that they've told you about, they've shown you with with underground parking and the the greens. And that's, I don't know how we get the 1913 building issue resolved, but we gotta get it resolved by fall.
Okay.
Hey, John.
Go ahead.
So, uh. Couple of things that have come up. I agree with Rich, you know, it'd be nice to be on the building committee. And of course, I know Kevin agrees with that. We'd like to have the Democratic seat on that building committee, please. The other thing is, you know. We're in this catch 22, you know, about who gets to approve last and things like that. Personally, you know, unless there was a lot of good binding words in there about the town council at the end of this process. I would be very reluctant to approve bond authorization. You know, without understanding fully what the final, final project looks like. And just my usual comment, um, you know, if we don't preserve the 1913 library. What other building is there anywhere near downtown that you would preserve? Thank you.
Just, just a thought on Kevin's question of when do we resolve 1913? It seems to me the answer to that question is planning and zoning. I mean, they're, they're the, they're the last meaningful forum for resolving that question. If they approve the project without preserving that building. What are you gonna do?
In relation to the building versus the town green, just to go back to what Susan mentioned about town green. Having to be connected somehow with the municipality. If, if the building goes away and it becomes an official town green, does that mean there's some? Kind of easement that the town then puts on the green in order to make it officially municipal property? Is it either an easement on the green or keep the 1913 building? Is is that where that might be? Now, I guess the first thing is, in order to make it an official town green, to be calling it that, it does imply it is owned by the town. Does that happen by an easement?
That's a legitimate question, Maria, but the library is committing to it in perpetuity green.
A green, but not a town green. So a lawn.
Well, let's not get hung up on the language, I mean.
But the language means, you know, whether it's municipal or not, so that's.
Well, the building is effectively a public building, like, you know, given the degree that it's used by the public, so.
Yes, and about five or 10 years from now, the library may think or believe that they need money and they can sell it. And there's nothing on writing.
We've made clear, we've made clear, we're, they may, they're, they're gonna commit to having it be in perpetuity green. That's one of the things we talked about. So I I understand that's what you feel, and that's what I feel. Now, whether it's.
That sounds like an easement because if it's in perpetuity and the library goes away. It's not in perpetuity unless it's the.
Library goes away, the town, the town's gonna get the library. If we still have libraries.
Well, let's look at, see what the MOU says about that.
Well, again, that's part of the issue, though, Tom, you know, these issues have been, have been discussed and people are, they're, they're issues that need to be raised and. And get to resolution. So there, there are a few issues that have to be worked through. It's entirely appropriate to discuss them and 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 debate them.
John?
Go ahead.
I, I think, I think it's a very big deal that the library is, has recognized they need to kick the architect off and actually get a plan that everybody can get enough specificity to make a decision. And they're taking the risk of paying them and getting the plan going. And I think that's what's gonna keep, get this thing going. Until there actually are drawings people can look at and costs they can look at, nobody's gonna be satisfied. And and I know they've got a bankwell letter that says Bankwell is willing to loan them $15 million. But I guarantee Bankwell will not loan Penny one if they haven't been through planning and zoning. Uh, I'm sure, I haven't read the letter, but I'm sure the letter specifies the things that they will, that are required before Penny one, one crosses from Bankwell to the library. And the town needs to look at it the same way. And I know the Board of Finance had that discussion last night and had basically made the same, the same point.
Penny, I have two comments. Number one is, um. I hope in our relationship, the town with the library, that we do. Have more of a designated role with the library. I'm, I'm married to a venture capitalist and I understand that anybody who invests in another business. Typically has a voting position on the board. So that you have protection of what your investment is. Secondly, I hope as the library is putting their plans together, that they're doing a, a serious. Deep dive into an analysis of how libraries are going to be used in the future. Every organization that I am a part of is doing a very, very deep and analysis. Given what we have just gone through in the past five months. That how we lead, how we use entities. Are going to be very different. Be it, you know, far more virtual involvement and and program delivery as opposed to in person delivery. And so what does that do then to space needs and allocation of space? Within the, the structure is 48,000 square feet now too much. Given what the change and participation could be. I think, I think our future is, is going to be colored by what we have gone through and are continuing to go through. And probably will continue to go through. And so I I hope the library is, is really. Not, not putting 48,000 square feet in our town that's in the future not gonna be necessary.
Hey, John, I I have been kind of quiet here because I've been listening and I'm, I'm, I'm one of those guys who. Asked not to even talk about this until we have more detail because I, you know, I believe that we've had three or four of these meetings where we're talking about, well, what if? The MOU does this and what if the MOU does that? And until we actually get the MOU, we, we, you know, it's really a conversation and it's important to talk through some of these issues. But the process we have set up in this town since the beginning of time has been, you know, it's, it's one thing after another, you know, we, we go through planning and zoning, we have to go through the council. And last night, listening to the Board of Finance, the one thing that struck me was they kept saying over and over again, and Todd said this a number of times, 10 is 10. 10 is 10. We are gonna give $10 million to this project. We're not giving $10 million one dollars, we're giving $10 million period. And it's important to remember that. And we can have a say in the, in the building and we should, and we should have a, a seat at the table the whole way, which we will. But we can't dictate, because we're a one third stakeholder here, we can't dictate the entire project like we're doing the whole thing because we're not. I mean, it's, it's unless we say, listen, we'd like to run the show, let's make it 35 million bucks. Right now, we get 100% say. That's the only way through this. I mean, otherwise, 10 is 10. And I heard that loud and clear last night, 10 is 10.
And Steve, the Board of Finance looks at it as a bargain to get a $35 million building for $10 million, so.
Well, I like to remind everybody, we thought it was a bargain to do the Fields project and then they came back, they didn't have enough money.
But Christina, Christina. Christina, seriously. The Fields had no backstop whatsoever. It was completely privately funded and we had to do that. In this case, they have a bank behind them, the best bank we have in Buchanan. By far, very well funded, backstopping them. And we, we're not in the business of loaning them money. But if, if it came to it and the bank goes belly up, yeah, yes, we would have to step up, but I don't see Bankwell going out of business anytime soon, so.
I don't see, no, I don't, I don't mean it that way. I mean that if they need more money for the project and they take out a $15 million loan. How are they gonna repay it if they can't sustain themselves and need the town to pay 80% of their operating and benefits package? Be real, they don't have the money to do that. So they can borrow it and Bankwell can lend it, but Bankwell is gonna be looking to the bank to pay it back when the library can't do it.
Bob Spangler covered some of that last night when he talked about the way the YMCA is handling their operation. And the way they have paid back $3 million in, in, in the debt already by fundraising. And the library has a better, I think, a better fundraising arm than the YMCA. So believe me, that money is coming. I, I, I have 100% confidence they're gonna be able to raise this money. They're, they got $8 million in eight months. I don't know anybody that's ever done that before. No, no one's ever done that.
Steve, they got $16 million of pledges from 150 families.
Yeah.
I think that's part of the evaluation the Board of Finance is making as to how strong their ability to perform on raising their $25 million is, which I think pretty, people are pretty confident of.
And and quite frankly, on a, you know, there's 90, I'd say nine out of 10, 9.5 out of 10 people that I see in town, I see a lot of people. I mean, I really do see, I'm, I've been at work every day since this thing started, this COVID thing. So I'm out every single day. Everyone I talk to about this library, even the folks that may want to save the, the 1913 building, every single person's excited about this. What this will bring to town, the commerce, the, the look and the feel. Everybody I talk to is so excited that, you know, I, I, I don't think that the, the building of the library is the issue. I think there's a lot of folks who would like to have a say or a place at the table, and I get that. But we, we shouldn't get hung up on the fact that we don't all want this to happen. This has been decades in the, in the making. And here we are, we're at the five yard line. And everybody in Buchanan, 06840 should be crazy excited about this. This is gonna be amazing. So I, you know, I don't know, for 10 million bucks, 10 is 10. I keep going back to that. It's a pretty good deal.
And the operational costs are not going to be 2.3 or 2.4, they're gonna be 3.6 or 3.8 annually. 10 million.
Chris, yeah, we, we don't know that yet. I mean, if, yes, a bigger building and a newer building may be more expensive. But if you knew how much money they've dumped into the old library building to keep that thing going. I mean, we were replacing, when I was on the board 100 years ago, the roofs were going, the leaking, they were putting buckets all over the building. And that, the elevators are broken. I mean, this is year, this is two decades ago. So, I mean, it's, it's time. We've gotta get this done. Sorry, John, I'm getting excited again.
No, I think it's good. I think although it's a little bit messy, town council meetings are always a little bit messy, I think it's good. Cause one thing I learned is that our concerns are not necessarily identical to the Board of Finance concerns. You know, they, they are charged with the financial details. And yet I am always pleasantly surprised when Sven brings up some, you know, concerns on representation. Or Christina brings up some other questions on maybe traffic studies. Our concerns are our concerns and the only way we can add much needed transparency to the process is by having this. Conversation. So I'm glad we did it. I'm glad we're not, you know, we're not knee deep in the MOU. But we are still hearing that, you know, the town count is committed to the project, but still has a lot of questions. And there's a lot yet to be resolved and that, and my concern was that we didn't want to be appearing to slow this process down. Uh, and what I'm hearing from Kevin is that we're not slowing this down. We're ordering traffic studies and we're asking the questions and we're continuing to work on this. And that we should get it in 2020, not in the spring. And I hope that's good enough for the library and I hope the library learned something about the process tonight, too. So if there's nothing further. Did you wanna, did you want to address any of that, Kevin, or? We're good?
I think, I think you've covered it, John. I think, okay, we got a lot of work to do in August and September.
What?
John, I'll just, I'll just second what Steve said. And I agree, we've, we can debate the merits of $10 million. But I think a lot of what I'm hearing are merits that.
But I think a lot of what I'm hearing are merits that really are not in, not part of our job description. Sorry about that dog. I, I, I don't think we should be discussing what the function of a library is in the town or what, you know, what the 20th century library, 21st century library is going to be like. I mean, that's, I, I, that's not my job. We need to determine whether the town should be giving taxpayer money to fund the new library. And it's an overwhelming majority of people in this town say yes.
Good. Okay. And with that, let's move on to the next subject.
Hey, John, just, John, before, before we go on this, I just want to reiterate what, what Tom and Rick said about, about the representation on the building and on the library board. We need to make sure the sooner the better in terms of getting these folks on these, even if it's temporary, we should get that going, so.
All right. Well, since we're talking specifics, I think that at one time the town council asked for two seats on the library board and two seats on the building committee. And in at least one version of the MOU that I've seen lately, the town council is, has got one seat on the library board and one seat on the building committee. But as we've already said, the MOU is not finalized. And so I guess that's still an open question. And I, I believe the library board has heard your feedback, so we can leave it at that. But yes, it's an open-ended question. Representation is important to the town council.
All right, John, I've just got one question. Connecticut has this weird thing with nonprofit libraries being supported in the, it's even in the Connecticut general statutes. Municipal money can go to libraries as long as they're open to the public. I know that people are saying that 70 or 80% of the operating costs are paid for by the town, not the capital, not when the lamp room got flooded. Are there any examples of any nonprofit libraries anywhere that are completely funded on their own? I mean, I feel like we're getting a good deal in town. I mean, most of the other municipal libraries I know in Massachusetts and New Jersey, they're fully funded 100% by municipality.
New York State, New York State, too.
Yeah. I, I don't know of any library that's nonprofit that's on its own 100%.
We will ask that question of the library board, but Kevin and I are not aware of any. So.
John, they're also owned by the town or the city. They're not a separate 501(c)(3) in all cases.
But Connecticut has this weird sort of setup with nonprofits and libraries. It's in the Connecticut general statute and how it works. Is that true?
Yeah.
Westport nonprofit, isn't Greenwich, Darien?
I, I don't remember all of them, but I do know that there are some that are owned by the towns and are supported 100%.
Most of them in Connecticut are, are the public-private model.
In the Northeast, what Lisa said when asked this question was it's about 50% that are association libraries, which are the 501(c)(3) public-private partnerships and about 50% are 100% municipalities.
Okay, we'll get an answer to that question. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. I think we only have two other agenda items. Five minutes with Linda on a computer lease and a 10-minute financial report. And then we can get back to committee reports and talking about all the other fun stuff. Computer lease resolution. Let's begin with a motion. Would somebody like to make a motion? Sven, go ahead.
I make the motion that where at the town of New Canaan, Connecticut, the town desires to enter into a lease purchase financing for the acquisition of certain computer equipment for the New Canaan Public Schools. Related to the equipment, the equipment, identified in the invitation to bid posted on the town website on June 17, 2020, published in the New Canaan Advertiser on June 25, 2020, the invitation to bid with a cost not to exceed $621,878, including the acquisition and installation costs and other expenses, if any, related to the lease of, the lease financing of the project. So I guess the motion is 621, not to exceed $621,878.
I'll second it, John.
Okay, we have a second from Steve. Any discussion? Go ahead, Linda. Why don't you give us some discussion on this?
Sure. So this is the annual leases for IT of equipment for the Board of Education. It was included in their budget for this year, which you, which we reviewed and we discussed. We published the request for proposals. We opened up the bids on Friday of last week at 1 o'clock. We had seven entities interested in bid, in bidding for it. They ranged in interest between 4.7% to 1%. The winning bid was awarded, we will take to the Board of Selectmen, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance, which happened yesterday and your approval tonight, is TD Equipment Finance at 1%. TD Equipment Finance currently has leases that they're doing for us on behalf of the Board of Ed. And that would be our, our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to enter into, into that agreement. But we had a lot of entities interested in it and so we recommend that you approve the resolution and, and we move forward with getting these equipments done for the Board of Education.
How does a bank make money lending money at 1%?
Short-term leases.
Interesting. Right.
Very short-term leases.
They are short-term leases.
They only have a five-year life.
It's got to be a catch. There's no catch, Linda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions of Linda? Okay, there being none. All in favor of the resolution authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement? Please raise your hand. So John Engel, Rich Townsend, Tom, Robin, Penny, Mark, Maria, Christina, Sven, Steve, Mike, and Liz. I think that's unanimous. The motion passes. Excellent. Okay, Linda. We get a financial report. Financial update.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here. Can you see?
Yes.
Okay. So before I get into the year-end report, I just wanted to report back to you the tax collections year-to-date. As you know, this was the year where the town council approved the 90-day extension as a result of COVID. And we were, we promised that we would bring to you and kind of track and see where tax collections are year-to-date. So what we did here is we looked at the first two weeks of the year up through July 14th to kind of see where things are trending. In terms of the extension, we had about a little over 50 entities request the extension to the 90 days. And so right now, a majority of our taxpayers are probably going to, indicate that they'll be paying according to the regular schedule. So what I have in front of you is what we've collected year-to-date, looking at last year compared to this year. Lockbox, these are payments that are made to the PO box that's included in the bill and so those are sent directly and then we, the lockbox reports to us. So for the first 14 days of this, of this year, we've collected 8.3 million compared to 9.9 million the same period last year. So it's, it's a little bit less, but again, it's also a function of when the, you know, how many week, working days are in the month and, and those types of things. So at this point, the way that we're looking at this is we're looking at it as being fairly consistent and with, with prior years, so it doesn't give us any reasons for concern. In-person payments, these are people that either walk into town hall or now this year, we've implemented the Dropbox outside of town hall. So last year, within the first 14 days, we had about 6.2 million either in-person. This year, we're up to 5.4. Again, if you look at it from a trending perspective, it's fairly consistent, slightly below where we would be, but not anything that would cause us alarm. Again, it's only 14 days worth of data. Online donations is where we're seeing an uptick. You'll see that the first 14 days last year, we had $3 million in online payments for taxes. This year so far, we have 4.5. That's a million and a half more people paying their taxes online compared to last year. Largely as a result of obviously the, the COVID and residents preferring rather than to walk in, try to check just to exercise that online option feature. So looking in total from these three sources, we were, we are at 18.3 million collected in the first two weeks compared to 19.1. This does not include our escort payments from banks. We typically don't, we typically start receiving those around the 20th. Those are, we anticipate getting those within the 30 days, which is the current grace period. Banks have indicated that they plan to remit those within that time. So this is just to kind of paint a picture of where we are. If you recall, when we did, when we had the discussion and the analysis on the extension program, I reported to you that the town's burn rate without making any adjustments is about 13, 13.5 million dollars a month to get us through the year. And therefore you could see that just from the current revenues that we've received so far, we are in a position to fund our operations from current revenues. This does not include any use of fund balance, which we don't anticipate occurring this year. But I just wanted to provide you just as a way of update what tax collections are doing this year before I go into reporting on last year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of this. But this is extremely positive and so I just wanted to share that with you as we begin this year. Next, I'll go into FY '20, the year that we're currently getting ready to close out. As you know, closing out the year takes some time. And so we're still paying bills of last year. We typically do that all the way through August. We don't officially close the books until the end of August. But what I wanted to report is where we are year-to-date and where we are projecting in terms of revenues. So year-to-date, our total revenues for the year are 148.8 million dollars. This is taxes and all of those other revenue sources. You recall that the budget we approved was 147.9. And therefore, right now, as far as the revenues, we've typically collected 100% of our revenues. We have very, a very small sum of revenues remaining to be collected. And therefore, just for conservative projections, I've just projected that the current revenue is what we're projecting to have at the end of the year. So you'll see that our total revenue is about 800,000 in excess of the revenue that was budgeted. Historically, we always over-collect largely as a function of our collection rate. We budget 98 and a half. We collect in excess of 99. But you recall that this year, I mentioned that we were under-collecting in some of these other revenues. Our building permits were down compared to prior years, largely a function of what's been happening with the economy. Our conveyance fees, although down by about 150,000 compared to last year, but they've trended really well. And John, you'll know this, that there's been an uptick this spring. And therefore, we had a budget of 1.2 million dollars for the year. Year-to-date, we're at 1.1, which is only 150,000 below what we, what we had budgeted for the year. Initially at the beginning of the year, when we were looking at this, we were actually, we were, we weren't sure if we would collect anything above, above a million dollars. You'll see that this year's collections so far already exceed what we collected last fiscal year. And so this is, this is extremely positive. So all in all, even these revenues that we under-collected, they've been compensated by the over-collection of some of these other revenues. And therefore, all in all, we are looking at revenues exceeding, exceeding budget this year, once again, as we did last year. And then the other side of this coin are the expenses. You'll see that year-to-date, total expenses, I'm going to scroll to the bottom. Here we go. Total expenses year-to-date, we're at 145.7 million on a $150 million budget. As I mentioned, we still have bills that we're still paying throughout the end, throughout the year. Throughout the end of the year, we also have, because of how we do salaries on our accrual basis, the current payroll, we have about two days of payroll for FY '20 that are also going to hit this budget. So at this point, we're projecting that our total budget by the end of the year will be 148.5 million overall, which puts us actually below budget for this year, which was at 150, 150.9. But you'll notice that 148.5 projected actual expense is actually below last year's budget and therefore on the spending side, we're actually trending downwards. Now, this is also a function of, you know, slowing down of expenses, results of COVID and those types of, of actions that occurred this year. But you'll also notice on here, I was in discussion with the Board of Ed and Dr. Keating last week. We've reported to you, you approved the 400,000 transfer into the Board of Ed non-lapsing fund to cover their COVID-related expenses into next fiscal year. So that's been taken into account. But even with that, the Board of Ed, right now, we're projecting that they'll be coming in under about 1.6 million. My discussions with Dr. Keating is that this number could be, could be higher. So this is a conservative number that we have plugged in for now. And then on the town side, we're coming in about $848,000 under, under budget. This also includes $279,000 of COVID expenses that we've incurred, we've incurred this year before the year is over. As you're aware, we will get reimbursement for the COVID expenses. We won't see those reimbursements this fiscal year. We'll see them next fiscal year. So what does this do to our bottom line? And I'll go back to the first page. So where we are right now is we're projecting that our revenues will exceed our expenses by about 324,000 by year-end. And therefore, we actually look to be adding slightly to the fund balance this year when we, when we eventually close. There's still some changes that, that may happen. As I mentioned, we're waiting to see what happens with the Board of Ed and some of these other expenses that we're paying for the fiscal year. But we anticipate ending in a much better position that we had initially projected when we started monitoring this and understanding the impacts of COVID. And again, even with coming in 324,000 ahead in terms of revenues, we still have 270,000 so far worth of COVID expenses that we anticipate to get reimbursed next year. So if you factor that in, in terms of revenues over expenses, I think we're, we're ending the year fairly strong. And from tax collection perspective, we're also starting the year very well. So I think those are two really positive trends and that's what I have as far as a, as a financial update and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So revenues, bottom line, revenues, we got an email from, all of us got an email from Board of Finance last night congratulating us on ending the year well, saying revenues are above what was projected and expenses are below what was projected. You just said revenues are $300,000 above what was projected. What was expense?
No, actually, revenues are $890,000 above what was budgeted.
Okay.
Expenses are projected to be $2.4 million less than what was budgeted. But the net impact of those, because you recall when we budget, every year, we budget a fund balance drawdown where we, we budget for more expenses and revenues. And so the net impact of that, the difference between those two is about $350,000 or so, net revenues exceeding expenses, if that makes sense.
Okay, okay. Any questions of Linda?
I love reports like that. That's, that's a good report, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, looking forward, it's probably not fair, but Linda, do you see with, for instance, are there any vulnerabilities looking forward? I can think already that while real estate is trending up, so is school enrollment. And so are there any places like school enrollment where we might see increased expenses looking forward in the second half of the year?
Possibly, but you recall expenses related to adjusting for the new COVID environment, those were factored in, that $400,000 request that was made this year, that's already set aside in a non-lapsing fund. And therefore, we've somewhat mitigated for those by that 400,000, which is above and beyond what was budgeted for the, for the Board of Ed. So any additional expenses? So, any additional expenses over and above the 400,000 is where I would, I would, I would have concern. But I think it's really early to say, and I, I think I saw Deanna on the call, and she may be able to share more of what her perspective is as far as the Board of Ed. But on the town side, it's, I don't know. I, I can't say. I know Tiger's on the call. He may speak to any public works-related and unanticipated expenses. But, you know, this year was a really tight budget year. The town came in, on the town operation side, we came in, I believe, just about 2% below the current year's budget. And therefore, we, we're going in rather with a fiscally conservative budget. And likewise, you, you recalled that the Board of Ed also, we approved the Board of Ed operations budget at lower levels than what was initially requested. So, I think we're going into the year lean. We're finishing the year well, and our tax collections are positive. And so, I think we're in a really good position beginning the year to mitigate any unforeseen expenses moving forward.
Go ahead, Sven.
I don't know, you know, guys with 30 million dollar plus fund balance, given an economic situation that we're in right now, I'll just say it's excess taxation when you also factor in the fact that there's no salt anymore in the world. Thank you.
Good point. Maybe we should be giving some of it back. I'm sure that Board of Finance is, is thinking about that every day.
I agree with Sven, I second that.
Good, good. Got a Democrat and a Republican in agreement. I love that. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Linda. Excellent. Do you want to move to committee reports? I'm going to go find it. Where is my committee? Bylaws and ordinances, Mark and Steve, anything? Any work on bylaws?
No new, no new work, but we did just finish filing the latest ordinance. Tom Sadler helped, and of course, Mike Morrow got the last draft together for us. And we had, we are filing that, it was filed with the town clerk, so should be all set to go. So, we're just, I think Sebby had one last question about when the tax deferment goes into play, whether it's this year, or do we want it immediate, or do we want it to go in next year? So, that's really one of the only questions that we need to answer, but otherwise, I think we're all set to go. So, that's it as far as I could. Mark, you got anything on your end? I think right now, we're, we really don't have anything working right now because of, we just haven't put a meeting together.
Okay, good. So, next up is Conservation, Robin and Rich. Robin's muted.
Sorry. The Conservation Commission, they approved a, an outline for the transfer station, a master plan. Bristow is going forward. Friends of Bristow are having a fundraising starting through a Sustainable Connecticut Matching Fund, starting in September. And that's about it on, on the Conservation Commission, looking at composting at the transfer station, and that's about it.
They did get a...
Sven's muted.
Sven, you got to unmute yourself.
Sorry. I thought they did. So, for Bristow, they've got a donor for 100,000 dollars over five years based on results. And another landscaper has offered to not only donate the plants, but also the planting, 1,000 native species plants. That's huge.
Hey, Robin, that's a lucky dog behind you, I got to say. It's a cat.
She won't, she won't leave. Sorry about that.
All right, I have a question for Tiger. I know Tiger loves it when I pop a question his way in the middle, middle of a meeting like this unannounced. But a couple months ago, you said, as a result of COVID, the contractors out there are very hungry, and it might be an opportunity for New Canaan to get going on some projects. So, when I hear Sven talk about getting going on Bristow, and when I hear you talk about getting going on paving roads, is that still true? Because my perception is, it's very hard to go get services, contract for services out there, that, that contractors are very busy. So, I don't know quite what to make out of it. Are they, are they hungry, or are they not hungry? And is this an opportunity for the town of New Canaan to get going on some projects? Oh, I think I lost him. Oh, he's coming back.
Lost in the dark. We have several projects out to bid right now that we will see exactly what the pricing is and whether or not contractors are hungry. I think you're seeing that smaller projects and larger projects, most municipalities are not moving forward with projects, large capital projects. So, those contractors seem to be hungry. We have, the Bristow Bird Sanctuary work will be received tomorrow as well as reconstruction of the schoolhouse and cottage parking lots will be received tomorrow. We'll see exactly how those numbers come in. We'll see whether or not contractors are still hungry or not.
Any chance we're going to get a 30 million dollar library for, say, 25? I mean, you did say big projects, you know?
I did.
All right, I guess we'll find out. So, are we taking advantage of this big project by moving forward? I mean, are we, are we accelerating paving or transfer station projects, inevitable transfer station projects?
Inevitable transfer station projects.
Well, you guys are always replacing, you know, something over there.
We are accelerating some of our paving, yes, but that's more due to what I spoke about before as far as residential complaints as to the condition of the roads, not necessarily the, the pricing. On Field Crest and Village, but again, we will see tomorrow how that pricing goes for parking lots and the other work that we have. And we do have plans to move forward with others if, if those, that pricing comes back in favorable.
Okay, we'll come back to you when we get to infrastructure and utilities. Education, Tom and Maria, how are we doing in education?
Well, the, the latest focus, of course, is reopening. And, and at the Board of Ed meeting on Monday, in, partly in anticipation or a preview of that, they, they announced the results of a survey they did of how the distance learning has gone to date, be some indicator as to what the challenges will be for the future. And it was very stunning in two ways, very moving in two ways. One is that the survey confirmed, and it was of children, students, parents, and teachers, it confirmed what we, one of the things that we've been seeing on, on the media nationally and statewide in any event, which is that distance learning is brutal. I mean, the social and emotional impact on our kids is not wonderful. I mean, they're lonely, they're starved for interaction. That, that was quite moving, and you can see why it's, it's so important that we try to come up with a better way to get them in, into school in the fall. The, the other thing, though, that the, that the survey results showed is if you compare the results of this survey with what we hear in the rest of the world, we've heard in some places that schools don't even serve distance learning to 40% of the kids, that there's no log-on, there's no interaction with the teachers. It's just, it's just a hot mess in many areas of the country. And contrasting, in contrast with that, in New Canaan, once you get past this negative emotional impact, the kids are working their tails off, the teachers are working their tails off, they're, they're going out of their way to contact all the, all the kids that are maybe marginalized or more greater at risk chasing them down, the, the kids that are, or English is not the first language, the, all the groups that might need special attention are getting it. The innovation, the tenacity, the leadership, the consistency, and the communication to parents from the schools to the, to the students and the teachers is phenomenal, tremendous positive results from that. So, how are we doing compared to the rest of the world? I think it might have been Leo Carl that said it's, we're light years ahead. It's just a tremendous vote of confidence in the schools. But it's not pretty because it's not a, it's not the way that our kids really deserve to be taught.
How about the, I think the latest we heard was a surge of enrollment. Are we up 30 in the school system, or is it 50?
I think it was a net 10, wasn't it?
No, well, I, I think it's just a little, Deanna's still here. I think it's a little less than 30. But the thing to keep in mind is, we don't know still with this migration from New York, how many kids are going to show up, you know, for school at the end of August. So, what, what we know is, is just part of the story, but...
They have added sections to, to elementary sections, so who knows what'll happen? But, John, with the younger kids, that's where you end up adding because the classes are smaller.
John, we're up 29 year-over-year. The actual enrollment over the, well, actually, over the NEZDQ projections, we're expecting 4,194 students right now. It's still early. We usually get more enrollment throughout the summer. So, last year, we were at 4,166 students. So, we're, we're seeing a good, and Maria's right, we're adding two elementary sections. A lot of the sections at the elementary schools were above guidelines. So, you know, we're, we're adding sections. And, and in this environment, you don't want large sections, particularly in this environment.
Yeah. 29, and we're only just beginning.
Hey, John, can I ask Deanna or Tom a quick question about, I, I read somewhere where the, I think Connecticut said that the governor wants by the 24th of July, a plan from each town. So, we've, we're basically preparing on New Canaan's plan, and then we'll roll it out and announce that to the parents, I guess. That's the way it'll work, Deanna, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, the parents, we'll have a, you know, we'll have our, another reopening committee meeting next week. We're not, we canceled tomorrow so that there's more time for the district to kind of really focus on getting all the details out there. But yes, it's, it's due on the 24th.
It's, that's great to, you know, to get it out to the parents, because, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of parents that are trying to plan and figure out what they're going to do for daycare and stuff. So, that gives them, gives them some time to get that going. It's great.
Yeah, Brian just sent out to all parents in the district a very detailed timeline of what they should expect when. So, anybody, any parent who has a child in the district has a better sense of what's happening.
The thing to keep...
Also, I just wanted to clarify because I thought I did read a net 10. So, 10 increase from where we were at in June? That's...
Yeah, it would have been from June, Maria. That's, so we get an update, but I'm doing a year-over-year comparison. So, we get, we get an update from June, and then, I, I actually don't remember the June number, to be honest with you. I kind of focus year-on, year-over-year, but yes. So, that could be true. I don't, I don't remember the, the 10, but I do remember the 29.
Real quick, to Steve's question, I, I think what you might have been getting at, Steve, will we know in July whether we're going to be 100% in school, 100% at home or, or hybrid? I don't think we can guarantee that. I think what we're going to tell people is, here's, here's why we're ready to do any of the three. We're working toward everybody in school, and this is what that would look like. But, you know, we can't control what the community spread is going to be and what model will be dictated.
It is amazing what two weeks does during this whole thing. I mean, two weeks looks completely different, you know? Two weeks ago, California was wide open, and, you know, some of these states were wide open, and now they're back to being closed again. So, it is amazing. Hopefully, you know, this area, we've done a great job, but we need to keep it up, so. But the parents do need to plan, and I know Brian does an unbelievable job at communicating. So, I, I expect the parents are going to be well-informed about what's going on.
Okay, let's move it along. Finance and government, Mark and Rich, got anything for us?
I would just, I would just comment, we've already talked about a lot of it because we talked about the finance committee meeting last night. And I think, you know, the, the finance, the finance, the finance board is, is, you know, this is kind of a low month for them, given they just approved everything. And so, they, they really talked about the library and the transfers and, and the end of the stuff, end of the year stuffs that, that Linda just took us through. I, I think that looking forward, we still haven't seen Waviney here in the town council, right? So, we, we still have a few large capital projects, and, and the library is not the only one. And I quite frankly, have no information about when to expect the Waviney thing to come forward, maybe somebody else does. Outside of that, I have, I have little to report. Mark, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I would second what you said.
We don't have to answer that tonight. I think Kevin heard you, that you were wondering about Waviney. Got it. Health and Human Services, Liz and Penny.
Yeah, just quickly, I think maybe everybody knows that Bethany Zera was now officially the new Director of Health and Human Services. Yay, she's done an amazing job throughout this entire COVID situation, and very excited that she's gotten the recognition she deserves. They also was able, they were also able to hire a new person, a social worker, which they've been trying to do for some, someone with a master in social work, whose name is Marcy Rand. And I think that Bethany's happy to have someone to assist her. And I think that amongst other things, Marcy's going to be helping offloading some of the senior interactions that Bethany's done. One other thing to mention, the food pantry is very low. St. Mark's is now once again taking donations between 8:30 and 10:30 on Monday morning. So, that's something that people can do. I know they'd appreciate that. Penny, you got anything else?
Nope. You covered the important parts.
Does St. Mark's take only non-perishable, or do they take tomatoes from people's gardens and other fresh vegetables?
They have their own garden, actually, that they use to donate to the food pantry. I don't think they take non, I don't think it's perishable items.
Okay. Infrastructure and Utilities, Christina and Penny.
I'd say that earlier in our meeting, you had an overview of the solar efforts around, you know, and the solar panels in the schools. And Tiger gave you an update on the gas line. I don't know that there are other things that were covered at the Monday, first of the month, Infrastructure Committee that, that the first selectmen put together.
The update that I have is that the West Road Bridge replacement will start on July 20th and probably go through Thanksgiving or Christmas. So, there is a map with a rerouting of traffic for that area. And I hope Tiger, are you putting that online?
Yes, we put it on that line. I tweeted it out this evening. I put it on Instagram this evening. It'll be online, and then there's a press release that'll go to the papers as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also have Main Street with the water main being installed by Aquarian, so...
That's correct. That, I tweeted that as well, and we're waiting for a, a press release from Aquarian for that work. That'll take probably the next four months. That press release is forthcoming. Once we have that, we'll release that as well. But I tweet out every morning that, that, where they are at present and where they'll be going and where the detours are.
And if we want these tweets, what, what is your handle on, on Twitter?
I think it's New Canaan Department of Public Works.
Okay. I'll have to subscribe. I'll have to follow you.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
It's very detailed. Tiger, what do you say? We had one complaint from a resident about starting too early on Main Street. Have we tried to figure out ways of not jackhammering at 7:00 in the morning?
That was unfortunate. She, directly across the street from her at 7:00 AM doing test pits. She's a teacher, enjoys her summer where she can sleep late. So, I did ask the contractor to amend while we were in front of that area, in front of the, some of the residents there. The difficulty is if we start later, it's a little bit of traffic problems, and then we run later in the day, which tends to aggravate people as well. So, the normal cycle is that we ask for 7:00 AM start, we ask them to get off by 4:00. If they run into problems, we're still in daylight, getting, get off by 5:00 or 6:00 if they run into... But if we start them later, they'll run their full day and end later. If you run into a problem later in the day, then they went into the nighttime. There's no great solution.
Okay, Land Use and Recreation.
I think the meeting talked about a lot of things. The access road between Waveney and the high school, they're starting to work on that. I guess they have to get, talk to Tennessee Gas to get over the easement that's in the driveway. Tiger, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Oh, and the tennis courts at Mead came up, and I guess you're not working on them. We're not working on them yet. They may be converted or, I don't play pickleball, but I guess there's a whole discussion how they may go from tennis courts to pickleball courts.
But I think we also got a report that the number of tennis passes are up by 50, 100%. So I would be surprised if in the middle of a surge of tennis playing, they started converting courts. But I guess they're, you know, they know what they need.
I don't think it'll happen now.
We don't plan to do that now, not in the middle of this work. But there is thoughts for conversion, coming back to the town bodies for a discussion, further discussion on the budgeting of it, and then moving forward in the spring. There's no plans for the fall. We'd like to, you know, continue to see people exercising and being outside and socially distancing.
The other thing is Steve Benko mentioned that there is a possibility of maybe two concerts at the end of the summer. But that was a week ago, and everything changes daily with what's going on. So I don't know how that'll go. Anything else, Robin, that you wanted to?
Yeah, just that Kiwanis weeknights, the 5:30, 7:30, Steve said about 15 people are showing up for that time slot, but he's saying the weekends, they're looking pretty good. And people can buy the Kiwanis passes for $15 if you don't have a pool pass as well. But right now, he's only seeing about 15 people show up on that 5:30, 7:30 time slot.
But that doesn't include the trails, right? That's just at the pond?
Yeah, no, I think that's people coming into the swim area.
Right, okay.
Great. And last, Public Safety, Liz and Mike.
Don't have anything. Mike, do you have anything?
Yes, on the Fire Commission, the rescue truck is going to be a little delayed in delivery because of COVID issues at the factory, so I plan. So they anticipate taking delivery, I think sometime in October. And they hopefully will have it in service, I think they said the beginning of the year. So that was one thing that's going on with them. They're on, it looks like they'll finish on or under budget. And with the governor's new travel restrictions, the department is vigilant with any of its, you know, staff traveling to any of those affected states and coming back. And we'll make sure that they will not be admitted into the building. They can use their time that's allocated under the Federal Cares Act, which will provide them, pay for that time that they're out. And if they exhaust that time, they can use, I guess, the personal time that they have. So these are pretty under control, but that's what's going on at the Fire Commission. As far as police, really, the only thing I have is a shout out to them for making some progress on that dog bite over at Kiwanis. So it looks like there was some movement on that today, so I think a lot of people were happy about that. That's it.
It was asked by a citizen during one of our four o'clock calls if we've made any progress on security cameras at Waveney and the like. And although, you know, that's maybe not for public dissemination, could I ask you, Mike, to follow up with public safety and ask if, you know, how that project's going?
Will do.
Thanks. Any other questions from anybody on anything? Okay, I guess, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Morrow and Mike Morrow, okay, all in favor? Yep, okay, we're done.
You guys have a 4.9, John. Nice job.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.